At the musical Chicago through the April 25th through the 28th in our auditorium. The 2019 Jefferson and Kennedy High School prom will be held on Friday, May 17th at the mall. I'm very excited about that. A little change of scenery. And then last week, Bloomington Public Schools hosted the 11th Annual Food Drive and at our school, I saw a lot of students donating their money and also their food supplies, more than just canned foods this year as well, which is great. This goes to Veep's food pantry and this helps during one of the more critical times of the year. Also between the break of the meetings, Jefferson had their Glow Dance, I believe, and the Glow Dance for the students was a great time of where very well organized from our student council and it wasn't that great though. I did get some golden dark paint on my shirt. Had to wash that a couple of times. Well, I didn't wash it, but it was a little hassle. Also, since the last meeting, Jefferson's Boys volleyball team had their first games. Our first games were in Rochester where we swept during JV and Varsity, so I'm really happy about that. Then this week, we had our first home game against Blake where we won 3-0 on our varsity and we're also playing right now at home against Southwest. So I couldn't be there. I manage a team, but hopefully we're winning today. That's...and lastly, I want to thank the school board members for attending the Senior Achievement Award night. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Ally Starks and I'm a junior at Kennedy. And it was a big couple of weeks for the performing arts at Kennedy. So we had the Cambrio Cabaret last Friday and Saturday, which is our top extracurricular choir and it's both boys and girls and it was super fun. The Addams Family Musical is coming up next week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, all at 7:00 PM and Saturday, there's a 2:00 PM show with a senior preview matinee at on the 8th at 10:00 AM, which is a Wednesday. And I highly encourage everyone to go. It's family friendly. It's really funny and we've been putting in a lot of hours and including like a six-hour rehearsal on Monday and Tuesday next week. So we're putting in the work. As Jackson said, there were senior achievement awards where we celebrated our standing seniors in areas such as leadership, artistry, and academics. Conferences were also held, which went really well. We had really good attendance. And a little sports section, we had our spring signing day and above our cafeteria, we have a full wall full of our collegiate athletes and where they're going to school and we're really proud of our Eagles that are continuing their athletic career. And also on the sports note, congrats to Kennedy alum Kenesha Bell as she was drafted into the WNBA as a Minnesota Lynx. So we're super proud of Kenesha. My sister was really good friends with her, so that's super cool. On April 5th, we hosted our Blood Drive and collectively, our students and our staff donated 50 pints of blood, which is really big. So a big thank you to everyone who participated. And the Kennedy Women of the Future group, which is a pretty recently developed group, has a group of 30 students, all females, from freshmen all the way up to seniors and they recently adopted six storm drains around the community. So big props to them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, I will make this announcement about government classes at school board meetings. A requirement of our 12th grade government class is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that you may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, or courtroom proceedings. The social studies curriculum guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. I'd like to invite any students that are here from a government class to come forward. Just state your name and your teacher.
Anna Larsenam, Mr. Storlein.
Chris Eastland, Mr. Storlein.
Alyssa Do, Mr. Storlein.
Mina Hammer, Mr. Storlein.
Salma Hussein, Mr. Storlein.
Kate Eichmann, Mr. Storlein.
Megan Benson, Mr. Storlein.
Thank you. And at the close of the session, or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you could ask for a signature on your agenda from any one of the administrative cabinet members that are along the wall over there, okay? And thank you for coming. That brings us to Part A. Does someone like to move Part A?
To move.
Thank you. Part A is our board business, field trips, grant acceptance, contrives, and finances. All in favor of Part A, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No. All right. That brings us right to Part B. The first item on the agenda is the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Recommendation Response. Would someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair.
Please.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent Schools District 271. One directs the superintendent working in collaboration with the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, AIPAC, to create a plan to ensure Minnesota academic standards relating to Minnesota American Indian tribes are being taught and at the appropriate grade levels. This plan must be shared with the school board in September 2019. Two directs the superintendent working in collaboration with the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee to create a plan to ensure culturally relevant training specific to Dakota and Ojibwe tribal communities of Minnesota is provided to district staff. The plan must be completed for implementation during the 2019-2020 school year. And three, directs the superintendent to study and make American Indian program staffing recommendations to the school board by July 1st, 2019.
Second.
And our Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby is here to talk about this resolution.
Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. Director Bennett just read through the resolution. That language was...I drafted it and then worked with Heidi...excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Heidi Hecker to ensure that it was meeting the intent or the recommendations that the AIPAC committee put forward. My plan moving forward, assuming approval, is to go and meet with the AIPAC on May 8th, share this with them, get, you know, information and feedback on how we're going to create these plans. Heidi Hecker was happy that it's a collaborative response that we're addressing all the three concerns that were brought by the committee and feels like we'll have a positive working relationship with them moving forward to resolve issues. I recommend approval.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, on part three here, your timeline, it's the American Indian Program Staffing Recommendations by July 1st. Is that going to give you enough time since it's already almost May?
Yes.
Okay. That's my only concern there. Okay, great.
Yeah. So if we're looking at one year progress, how are...what is your plan to monitor that progress through the school year next year?
Great question and will be included in the...if you're talking about number one, the plan for the standards, I would include that in the plan for the standards, what the progress monitoring for that would be. And I want to work with them and with staff to craft that. I don't have exactly what the answer is tonight, but we'll have that included in the plan.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you too was, so this would be something that you will be coming regularly checking in with your staff and Heidi and parents as well?
Yeah, I think we'll have a lot more regular interactions as long as I'm invited or others like Rachel Jens from the Curriculum Instruction Department with that group.
Are we including the voices of the students as well?
Yes. Yep. Heidi's got student groups and there's a student actually who sits on the AIPAC. You met him the night they came, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Did you say the next AIPAC meeting is May 8th?
Correct.
At what time?
6.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Next resolution is an agreement with the Nerdery for Special Ed Information System, also called SEIS. Would someone like to move that resolution? Please.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the agreement with the Nerdery LLC for the blueprint and roadmap for a special education information system.
Second.
All right. And our Director of Technology and Information Services, Don Weiser, is here to talk about this.
Thanks Chair Bartolato, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This agreement comes from a collaboration between Executive Director McIntyre's department and my own. We're looking at improvements to the data systems under which we support the special ed services that we provide. So there's a little bit of background in the resolution about from the special ed perspective. I'll just speak to the data perspective. What we have in existence right now is three data systems that support our work with special
At the musical Chicago through the April 25th through the 28th in our auditorium. The 2019 Jefferson and Kennedy High School prom will be held on Friday, May 17th at the mall. I'm very excited about that. A little change of scenery. And then last week, Bloomington Public Schools hosted the 11th Annual Food Drive and at our school, I saw a lot of students donating their money and also their food supplies, more than just canned foods this year as well, which is great. This goes to Veep's food pantry and this helps during one of the more critical times of the year. Also between the break of the meetings, Jefferson had their Glow Dance, I believe, and the Glow Dance for the students was a great time of where very well organized from our student council and it wasn't that great though. I did get some golden dark paint on my shirt. Had to wash that a couple of times. Well, I didn't wash it, but it was a little hassle. Also, since the last meeting, Jefferson's Boys volleyball team had their first games. Our first games were in Rochester where we swept during JV and Varsity, so I'm really happy about that. Then this week, we had our first home game against Blake where we won 3-0 on our varsity and we're also playing right now at home against Southwest. So I couldn't be there. I manage a team, but hopefully we're winning today. That's...and lastly, I want to thank the school board members for attending the Senior Achievement Award night. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Ally Starks and I'm a junior at Kennedy. And it was a big couple of weeks for the performing arts at Kennedy. So we had the Cambrio Cabaret last Friday and Saturday, which is our top extracurricular choir and it's both boys and girls and it was super fun. The Addams Family Musical is coming up next week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, all at 7:00 PM and Saturday, there's a 2:00 PM show with a senior preview matinee at on the 8th at 10:00 AM, which is a Wednesday. And I highly encourage everyone to go. It's family friendly. It's really funny and we've been putting in a lot of hours and including like a six-hour rehearsal on Monday and Tuesday next week. So we're putting in the work. As Jackson said, there were senior achievement awards where we celebrated our standing seniors in areas such as leadership, artistry, and academics. Conferences were also held, which went really well. We had really good attendance. And a little sports section, we had our spring signing day and above our cafeteria, we have a full wall full of our collegiate athletes and where they're going to school and we're really proud of our Eagles that are continuing their athletic career. And also on the sports note, congrats to Kennedy alum Kenesha Bell as she was drafted into the WNBA as a Minnesota Lynx. So we're super proud of Kenesha. My sister was really good friends with her, so that's super cool. On April 5th, we hosted our Blood Drive and collectively, our students and our staff donated 50 pints of blood, which is really big. So a big thank you to everyone who participated. And the Kennedy Women of the Future group, which is a pretty recently developed group, has a group of 30 students, all females, from freshmen all the way up to seniors and they recently adopted six storm drains around the community. So big props to them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, I will make this announcement about government classes at school board meetings. A requirement of our 12th grade government class is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that you may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, or courtroom proceedings. The social studies curriculum guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. I'd like to invite any students that are here from a government class to come forward. Just state your name and your teacher.
Anna Larsenam, Mr. Storlein.
Chris Eastland, Mr. Storlein.
Alyssa Do, Mr. Storlein.
Mina Hammer, Mr. Storlein.
Salma Hussein, Mr. Storlein.
Kate Eichmann, Mr. Storlein.
Megan Benson, Mr. Storlein.
Thank you. And at the close of the session, or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you could ask for a signature on your agenda from any one of the administrative cabinet members that are along the wall over there, okay? And thank you for coming. That brings us to Part A. Does someone like to move Part A?
To move.
Second.
Thank you. Part A is our board business, field trips, grant acceptance, contrives, and finances. All in favor of Part A, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No. All right. That brings us right to Part B. The first item on the agenda is the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Recommendation Response. Would someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair.
Please.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent Schools District 271. One directs the superintendent working in collaboration with the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, AIPAC, to create a plan to ensure Minnesota academic standards relating to Minnesota American Indian tribes are being taught and at the appropriate grade levels. This plan must be shared with the school board in September 2019. Two directs the superintendent working in collaboration with the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee to create a plan to ensure culturally relevant training specific to Dakota and Ojibwe tribal communities of Minnesota is provided to district staff. The plan must be completed for implementation during the 2019-2020 school year. And three, directs the superintendent to study and make American Indian program staffing recommendations to the school board by July 1st, 2019.
Second.
And our Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby is here to talk about this resolution.
Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. Director Bennett just read through the resolution. That language was...I drafted it and then worked with Heidi...excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Heidi Hecker to ensure that it was meeting the intent or the recommendations that the AIPAC committee put forward. My plan moving forward, assuming approval, is to go and meet with the AIPAC on May 8th, share this with them, get, you know, information and feedback on how we're going to create these plans. Heidi Hecker was happy that it's a collaborative response that we're addressing all the three concerns that were brought by the committee and feels like we'll have a positive working relationship with them moving forward to resolve issues. I recommend approval.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, on part three here, your timeline, it's the American Indian Program Staffing Recommendations by July 1st. Is that going to give you enough time since it's already almost May?
Yes.
Okay. That's my only concern there. Okay, great.
Yeah. So if we're looking at one year progress, how are...what is your plan to monitor that progress through the school year next year?
Great question and will be included in the...if you're talking about number one, the plan for the standards, I would include that in the plan for the standards, what the progress monitoring for that would be. And I want to work with them and with staff to craft that. I don't have exactly what the answer is tonight, but we'll have that included in the plan.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you too was, so this would be something that you will be coming regularly checking in with your staff and Heidi and parents as well?
Yeah, I think we'll have a lot more regular interactions as long as I'm invited or others like Rachel Jens from the Curriculum Instruction Department with that group.
Are we including the voices of the students as well?
Yes. Yep. Heidi's got student groups and there's a student actually who sits on the AIPAC. You met him the night they came, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Did you say the next AIPAC meeting is May 8th?
Correct.
At what time?
6.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Next resolution is an agreement with the Nerdery for Special Ed Information System, also called SEIS. Would someone like to move that resolution? Please.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the agreement with the Nerdery LLC for the blueprint and roadmap for a special education information system.
Second.
All right. And our Director of Technology and Information Services, Don Weiser, is here to talk about this.
Thanks Chair Bartolato, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This agreement comes from a collaboration between Executive Director McIntyre's department and my own. We're looking at improvements to the data systems under which we support the special ed services that we provide. So there's a little bit of background in the resolution about from the special ed perspective. I'll just speak to the data perspective. What we have in existence right now is three data systems that support our work with special ed students. Sometimes, you know, when you have multiple systems that they're...they don't always communicate well together. There's always room to improve when you have multiple systems. Inefficiencies, moving data back and forth, double entry introduces errors, those kind of things. Secondly, we found when we looked closer at the full spectrum of support that goes into supporting a student with special education needs, we found that there were some gaps in service in terms of data. That is some progress monitoring, for instance. There isn't really a good system to do that right now. Teachers are doing it. They're doing their best at it. It's not the most efficient way to provide that service. The goal of this agreement is to get the Nerdery's help to see if we can take those three systems, make a single system out of it, a special education information system that can give our special ed staff added efficiency and that can provide better services to our students.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, just quickly, John, thank you for coming tonight. I just wanted to make mention of usually when we do contracts, there's a beginning and an end date on the contract. And there's mention of timing in the contract. It says that it'll start April 8th. Tonight is the 29th, so...and then last roughly through May 3rd. So is it five, six weeks that we get them? Something like that?
Yeah, thanks Director Bergstrom. I forgot to mention that because Dick and I talked on the phone when he read. I appreciate you reading deeply into page five of the statement of work. It was...that language was from an earlier draft of the statement of work where we were intending to bring this...have this agreement ready for the board a month or so ago. So the revised dates, it's about five weeks of work that we're collaborating on. And I've adjusted those dates so that the signed version will reflect those new dates, starting from the time of signature by the board to five and a half weeks, give or take, following.
Good, thank you. I just didn't want anyone to think that you started before we approved it.
It's page five of the statement of work if you're looking for that detail.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brings us to resolution number three. Resolution proposed...proposing to place tenured teachers on partial unrequested leave of absence.
Madam Chair.
Please.
I move the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a separate resolution for each of the tenured teachers to be placed on partial unrequested leave of absence and vote is one. The names are as follows. Mary Ann Boniface, Mark Eggers, Michelle Holland, Megan Lagering, Perry Rudy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We need a roll call vote on this resolution. First of all, is there any discussion? No. Okay. So we need a roll call vote if we want to start with Director Bennett, please?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, next. We have a resolution proposing to place tenured teachers on unrequested leave of absence.
Madam Chair.
Please.
I move the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a separate resolution for each of the tenured teachers to be placed on unrequested leave of absence and vote is one. The names are as follows. Ashley Growth, Stacy Philippich.
Thank you. And again, we need a roll call vote and we'll start with Director Beeby this time.
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. And next, we have the Healthy Savings Program. Would someone like to move that resolution?
Number five.
Go ahead. Did you want to read that one?
I shall. I move the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a separate resolution for each of the probationary teachers to be non-renewed and vote is one. The list is as follows. Stephanie Bymal, Mary Ann Boniface, Jennifer Carlson, Mark Eggers, Frederick Egert, Ashley Growth, Michelle Holland, Kristen Hall, Emma Orr, Benjamin Kiss, Cheryl Kerner, Riley Knips, Sarah Loftus, Megan Lagering, McAndrea McNeely, Jay Melchior, Rose Mingo Holt. Knips, Sarah Loftus, Megan Lagering, McAndrea McNeely, Jay Melchior, Rose Mingo Holtz, Stacy Filipich, Kevin Race, John Rieger, Perry Rudy, Rebecca Seelander, Christine Shepherd, Faith Volturno-Halt, Susan Weber, and Anne Marie White.
Second.
Excuse me, I believe there was a new list because some of those names were already read in.
In previous resolution, yep.
So if you don't mind just reading the correct list.
We have to make sure we read the correct list. Pardon me while I should double check the list here.
The one that does no list? Okay, you're right. Good. Read that list. Let me why I just came out.
All right. All right, we're going to need to amend the names that I read so that these names are read into the, to the record, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. I'll do my best. Stephanie Byma, McAndrea McNeely, Anne Marie White, Jennifer Carlson, Jay Melcher, Frederick Egert, Rose Mingo Holtz, Kristen Hall, Kevin Race, Emma Orr, John Rieger, Benjamin Keist, Rebecca Seelander, Cheryl Kerner, Christine Shepherd, Riley Knips, Faith Volturno-Halt, Sarah Loftus, and Susan Weber. I think that's the correct list.
Second.
Okay. Now we have a second from Director Bennett, thank you. All in favor of this new list?
Roll call.
Pardon me?
Do we need a roll call?
Oh, correct.
Yes, roll call.
Correct. Do you want to start?
Yes, or aye.
Nellie?
Aye.
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 Perfect. Thank you.
Apologize for reading the incorrect names.
All right, that brings us to the Healthy Savings Program. Someone like to move that resolution, please?
Madam Chair?
Please.
Resolve, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves using wellness funds for a trial of the Healthy Savings Program.
Second.
Thank you. And Mary Burrows, our Executive Director of Human Research is here to discuss this.
Okay, Chair Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki and members of the School Board. I cannot talk tonight. Boy. I'm bringing forward a resolution regarding a program that we'd like to try for the next couple of years. Preferred One is part of our policy with them, they give the district certain amount of wellness dollars. We also have a lot of discussion in our insurance committee on how best can we spend those wellness dollars? And this past year, we've been looking at a program called Healthy Savings. It basically gives money back to members for buying and making healthy choices like fruits, vegetables, you know, things like that. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from other districts that have used it, and it's actually widely, pretty widely spread to a lot of different grocery stores. So it's not like you have to go to just Lunds or you have to go just to Cub. It actually is all over the metro now. So after examining it, we thought it would be good to see if our employees would participate and work, you know, make those fund dollars worth it, you know, and see what people feel about the program. So we're recommending a two-year trial with those funds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Coming?
Yep.
In my school district, we use it and I'm always happy every time I go to the store and I can get seven dollars off.
Yep. The savings, the savings are pretty substantial for people who do buy vegetables and fruit, and it's no cost to the employee the first couple of years. You know, we're, we're using our wellness dollars that are given to us for that. So we're excited about it and I think employees will be too.
Director Sarm?
So is there documentation or some, something on the items that are identified as the wellness items so that somebody knows to buy this rather than just go get this?
They do run specials, you know, that if you buy X, you get more of a discount, but really most of fruits and vegetables at a grocery store are going to be discounted. It just depends on how much that's going to be. I'm not sure if they send that out to members by, hey, this is our special this week. They haven't really talked through all of that communication aspect yet. But I know you have a card, you swipe, and it's just done at the point of sale. So there's nothing, they have to resubmit.
Right.
Or receipts or anything, it's just done right away at the cash register as you check out, so.
Well, and there is an app that, you know, when you're employed in and you can, you can download the app and have it on your phone and then you can check what the deal of the week is.
The special is, yeah.
Yeah, and it doesn't work in old stores, so you have to check and see which ones.
Exactly.
But, you know, for organic products, it's great because you get the, that savings in organic, like chicken and eggs and things like that.
Yeah. I know we checked out on some of the major like Cub Lunds and wholesale foods.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have a question? Hearing none, all in favor of the, this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Next is our 2019-2020 vendor and rates for district group insurance resolution.
Hello?
I'm Chair.
Yes, please.
I just want to share the wealth here. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271, excuse me, approves vendors and rates for district group insurance for the 12-month period from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020 per the attached memo. Number one, Preferred One Third Party Administrator for Self-Funded Health Insurance. Two, Preferred One Insurance Company Reinsurance for Self-Funded Health Insurance. Three, Fairview Employee Assistance Program. Four, Health Equity Health Savings Account Provider. Five, Delta Dental Third Party Administrator for Self-Funded Dental Insurance. Six, Voya Long-Term Disability Insurance. Seven, Voya Life Insurance. Eight, One Digital Benefits Consultant. Nine, Benefit Extras Incorporated Benefits Administrator Retiree Cobra Flex Spending. Ten, Voya Critical Care Insurance Program. Eleven, Voluntary Programs. Further be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 per its organizational meeting of January 14, 2019, authorized as superintendent or his designee to execute documents within the authorized budget as appropriate to the daily operations of the school district.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Mary Burrows is still here and she's going to tell us about that.
Okay. I know we do this annually. I think this format probably looks familiar to everybody. We're bringing forward the renewal rates for the next year's contracts. I will point out Voya is in the second year next year of all of their contracts. We have no changes for Voya, the Voya things for this next year. It will go out to bid the following year. So I can give you that bit of information. Other than that, our plans have been really stable. You can see as you go through what the increases have been for rates. The one thing I do want to point out that is a change, we have switched our benefit administrator, the Cobra Retiree Flex, that did go out to bid this year in the Benefits Committee, and we did select Benefit Extras as the new vendor for that, for those programs. It's a cost savings from about, you know, 5,000, you know, a year, and we heard very positive things about them. So we're looking forward to working with them. Other than that, everything else, same vendors that we've had.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I don't know if that's a question or a.
Director Sarm?
So this is effective July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020.
Yep.
And even though we somewhat approved it at our organizational meeting to do this.
Right. I'm just, yeah, I'm bringing the rates forward because we had a renewal, you know, quoted, yeah.
During the January to now, there's been the renewals and/or.
Right, yeah.
Corrections or whatever.
Yeah. Our Preferred One, like this year out for bid was medical, you know, our medical and our loss organization. And I brought those forward, I want to say in April, after the committee recommended that we stay with Preferred One based on that bid process.
Thank you.
I just want to say a word of thanks for the team that tracks these things and makes sure that we're getting the biggest bang for the buck. This kind of stuff isn't easy. It's, it takes a lot of time, there's a lot of detail involved, so I appreciate the work that you're doing on this.
Anyone else?
I will say the insurance committee is a good committee. They really do spend time looking through everything and the data that we collect and talking about plan and how it's running. I think it's a very interesting committee to be, to be on, so.
All right, if there's no further questions or comments, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Thank you. That will bring us right to board member reports.
All right, I'll go first. All right, the board hosted the CAC Award Banquet.
Oh, we did. We didn't host the CAC.
I'm sorry, CAC, I'm getting ahead of myself here. It was fun to go to the CAC banquet. Okay, so this is a Special Education Community Advisory Council. I just wanted to highlight the people, so district employees are nominated for a special caring award, and then they're, they're celebrated at this banquet, and it happens in the spring. We just recently went to it. But some of the different positions that people are nominated for, I thought perhaps I would highlight. We have teachers, we have paraprofessionals, we have volunteers, there's a bus driver in here, trying to find other, there's a social worker, speech language pathologist, DAP teacher. I won't go into the acronyms, but it's a wonderful evening where somebody is singled out for all the work that they're doing. They do this without, you know, without wanting or needing to be recognized, and this particular evening is just a, it's really, really nice. All the nominations are read and the folks get to come up and receive a little plaque. So it's really been interesting for me as a board member just to watch how this works and to see the people that deserve these awards earn them. Had an opportunity to visit Valley View Middle and watch High School Musical Junior. This particular presentation was, I think it was just last week, but it was rescheduled because of the snowstorm a couple, three weeks ago. So it was really nice to see so many people come back, put this back on their calendar, come back and watch these kids. It was a one-night-only type of thing. I think it was a Wednesday night. But it was, it was a lot of fun. The kids knocked it out of the ballpark and it was, it was, it was, I was just happy that I could stick it on my schedule. Made it to, as Ally had mentioned earlier, Kennedy had their parent teacher conferences. I managed to make it over there and one of the teachers mentioned to me, I was hoping that people would come. I'm really glad to see that so many people could make it. It was at a little bit of an awkward time, I think it was 3:00 to 6:00 or 3:00 to 6:30, something like that, but there were a lot of people there. I appreciate that the teachers are there, that they stay through a break, that they're there to answer questions. If you haven't gone to a parent teacher conference in a high school, some of the lines can get a little long, but the parents were, were understanding that each and every conference took whatever time it needed and nobody felt rushed. I certainly didn't feel rushed. I had to make sure that I went down to the, to the food room, I don't know if you call it foods or if it's facts or, I can't remember what you call it, but not everybody is in the gymnasium. And if you, if you walk around the school, there's a, there's a map that'll get you to your students, the correct room, and it's nice to see those people because they need, they need a little love down there when not so many people come down to see them. So it was another, another well-attended event and I appreciate the staff's willingness to do that. So I'll end my report there.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, it's been a really full couple of weeks and I'm glad to say I've been learning a lot. I went to the AMSD meeting and learned something interesting about third-party billing that we're going to be checking into. I spoke with Les about it. Funny that sometimes it's hard to collect on third-party billing because of how, you know, computer systems are not connected so that we have identification of the student and also of their, their medical assistance numbers and getting things coordinated because of just how the technicalities are. And one school district made an effort to put in, they said 89 hours to try to recoup costs. It cost them $15,000, but they got back over $200,000 that they were trying to get through third-party billing. So it ended up paying. So that was very fascinating to me. I'm an ambassador to the Transportation Department and really appreciate all they've been doing on these crazy weather days. And Debbie Gallup Burgum had a retirement party, she's been with us for 20 years, and it's been great. I think when we have people who have significant years with us, it creates that consistency that we need and it's to be honored. And I know we're going to have a time in May to honor all our retirees, so that will be a special time. Really enjoyed the Senior Kennedy and Jefferson Achievement Awards. I think the best part is sitting with the parents and talking with the students. I had three wonderful gentlemen, I guess since I have sons, I'm very comfortable around those guys. And I was very impressed with their accomplishments and another thing that, it's awards for volunteering. And one of the young men at my table received academic as well as volunteering awards. And I think it's important to realize that maybe there's others that have skills and a heart and a drive to help people in different ways. Had another interesting community opportunity. I know that Good in the Hood is one of our friends. I can't find them up here right now, but I went to help at one of the dinners they have and also where they distribute food to people in the community and ran into a family whose daughter is part of our Valley View preschool. And boy, was she smart. And I thought, she's a great example of what we're doing right over there. And the parents are very pleased with the program, very excited that she'll be going to Valley View Elementary in the fall, and both grandmas were there. And so it was very fun to interact with the families and also hear firsthand what they thought of our preschool in Valley View. I also spent seven hours over at the Capitol, five of those in the House Chamber, to hear the readings and the amendments and the voting on different parts of the omnibus bill. And I know that Nellie, who's head of our Legislative Committee, emailed everyone the most recent Association of Metro School District's summary. And I think it's encouraging to note that there is unity somewhat on efforts to deal with the teacher shortage and diversity, the need for student, for teachers of diversity. And so I know there were some grants. I had met an individual when Nellie and I were up at the Capitol for Minnesota School Board Association Day at the Capitol, and I was glad to see that there is still a movement to push funding for that. The other thing that seems to be unified, except for the amount of dollars, between the House and the governor and the Senate is safe schools. It's just a matter of funding amounts. And then another area where there's unity is in school-linked mental health grants, though the amounts differ between the different ones. While I was there, there was quite a contentious discussion on comprehensive sex education. I myself have been following this for about 27 years and have been researching more and more, and I think you'll find that's going to be, continuing to be an issue. Concerns are that there would be outside people coming in to teach that are not qualified teachers and they're, they're community members. Another thing is that curriculum and where it comes from. Right now, one of the, the major publishers of comprehensive sex education is Planned Parenthood, and some of their curriculum was read at this hearing and was very much shocking and very much something of concern. And I've had different families come to me very concerned. So there's going to be a lot of contention, I guess on Thursday, there's another. I guess on Thursday, there's another meeting of the Senate. And I don't know if I'll be able to get down there. But I found it very fascinating to see the different ones that are working on different bills, different amendments that are brought forward. And I sat so long that when I finally got up to walk to my car, I was very glad to move because it's not very comfortable in that chamber. But it's worth it and it's good to meet the different people. I also have a meeting on Wednesday this week with Melissa Halverson-Wickland to discuss funding with our district. So that's what I've been busy doing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I had a chance to attend the city welcome meal that they hosted at our Metro South Adult Basic Education. It was pretty well-attended. It was mostly some city employees, some district employees, some district volunteers, and then students that attend the adult education programs there. But one of the really great things is I met a student there that shared with me, because I have a son in the spectrum, she also shared with me that she had a child with, with ASD and that she is looking at becoming a special ed teacher in the future. So I was quite excited about that because we need, we have shortage of special ed teachers and especially when you have a parent also that already knows, you know, a lot of information about autism. So I thought that was good to know. And then evidently it's time for Capitol visits because I also was at the Capitol today with the Bloomington Public Schools Advocacy Council was there today. And the four people that could go was myself and Lynn Shear, Dennis Kane, and Chair Heather Stark. So the four of us spent the day together. We met here at school this morning and got back this afternoon. And so we spent the day down there. We were able to meet with four of our five elected officials. And the rest of the time, we stood in the hallway and waited because, because they're all in session. So we had to wait for when they could come out to meet with us. But there were a lot of people there and, you know, when you go with those three, there was a lot of people that we knew there and a lot of conversation in the hallway. So I think that actually there was a contention made for one of our mentoring programs at school while we were there. So, you know, it's all good stuff. So that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Time to superintendent.
Thank you. I have three motions to request. The first, administration requests a motion to establish a school board retreat on Wednesday, May 8, at 6:00 PM. For the purpose, one of the purposes is long-range facility planning. The retreat is to be held at Civic Plaza in the Chadwick Room.
So moved.
Second. All in favor of a retreat on Wednesday, May 8, at 6:00 PM, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Administration requests a second motion to establish a joint meeting of the school board and the city council on Wednesday, May 15, at 7:00 PM at, at the Civic Plaza in the city council chambers.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All in favor of a joint meeting Wednesday, May 15, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
The final motion is to establish a professional development session for the school board on May 28, 2019, at 5:30 PM in Room 6001. The topic is equity education.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of a professional development session, May 28, at 5:30 PM? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. 28.
May?
May 20.
Yes.
28.
That's right.
Is there any other business to come before the school board this evening? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.